I'd like to go ahead and call the regular meeting and work session of the Kalispell City Planning Commission. Ordered today, Tuesday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. Could we have, well, first of all, welcome all. Could we have a roll call, please?
Rory Young.
Here.
Kate Walker.
Here.
Pip Burke. Doug Kaufman.
Here.
Joshua Borgart.
Here.
Chad Graham.
Next, I would entertain a motion from the board for approval of the minutes from July eighth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I move to approve the minutes from July eighth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded approval of the minutes July eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, hearing none, minutes are approved. Next, we'll roll into hear the public. Public may comment on any matter that's not on the agenda. Tonight, typically, we would hold your comments to three minutes, so if anyone would like to opine, please step forward to the lectern and state your name and address. Anyone care to speak? Once again, anyone caring to opine on their ideas in front of the commission tonight? Seeing none, we'll close that part of the meeting and move into the public hearing. Planning Commission will hold a public hearing tonight. File number KZTA dash twenty-five dash oh-one. Hayden Holmes has submitted a petition for zoning text amendment relating to setbacks and how they're applied to structures' eaves. Current zoning regulations under section twenty-seven, thirty-seven dot oh-one oh one seventy-seven define a setback as the horizontal distance required between any structure, the furthest extension of the structure, typically the eve line or deck, and a lot line. This amendment would allow eaves to extend up to two feet into the setback areas in R-one, R-two, R-three, R-four, and R-five zones. Could we have the report?
Yes, thank you, Planning Commission. Hayden Holmes has submitted a petition for a zoning text amendment, as you mentioned, relating to how setbacks are applied to our structures' eaves in a residential setting. Traditionally, the city of Kalispell has used a setback definition which creates a bright line where nothing from the structure can extend beyond the line. There are some benefits to that approach, and that is relatively simple to understand and administer. The five-foot side setback through most of the zoning districts also aligns well with the building code, which begins to require fire protection measures once eaves are closer than five feet from the property line. However, it is fairly common in most cities to allow for some encroachments into the setback. Eaves are the most common, but sometimes they include bay windows, decks, or other appurtenances. Often in those situations, particularly with bay windows, the calculation of the allowable encroachment can get rather complex. In many jurisdictions, the end result isn't any different, and in some situations, actually more restrictive than the approach taken by Kalispell. The flexibility allowed with an eve encroachment can be beneficial both in terms of floor area and architectural appearance of a home. However, avoiding the complexity of those regulations would be preferable. This proposal, which is limited to a two-foot eve encroachment only, would allow for the additional flexibility while still maintaining a fairly simple application of the rule. And just stepping through what we would do in this situation here, the main, let me get this on here. This would be the main change, the core of it, be a new section in our supplemental regs that says in the R-one, two, three, four, and five zones that eaves on a structure are allowed to encroach up to two feet into a required setback area. Those five zones are our main single-family, two-family type of zoning. Then really, to make that work through the entire ordinance, there'd be a number of other sections that we would need to amend as you're working through the different chapters that would define the development standards within those zones. We would need to add a note saying eve encroachment see section twenty-seven point two zero point zero nine three, which would take you down to that. We also have a table in Appendix C which lists property development standards, so we would just need to add a footnote in there that, again, refers you back to this main, main rule. And then lastly, we would need to amend the definition, which currently says that that setback is that horizontal distance required between any structure and a lot line, which currently states that it'd be the furthest extension of the structure typically in eve, eve line or deck. We would add something in there except as otherwise specifically allowed under this ordinance, which would then allow that exception in those specific residential zones. With that, staff would recommend that the Kalispell Planning Commission adopt staff report KZTA twenty-five oh-one as findings of fact and recommend to the Kalispell City Council that the proposed zoning text amendment be adopted as presented and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, PJ. Any questions from the board?
Oh, wait.
Hearing none at this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing phase of this file. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward, state your name and address for the reference.
My name is Peter, from Spokane, Washington. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Peter Hagan. I'm with Hayden Holmes, the applicant of the zoning text change. We appreciate your time and your consideration of our requests. Here to briefly speak in support of the proposed zone text change to exempt the eaves from the residential setback requirements. While this may seem like a minor technical adjustment, it brings meaningful benefits to the broader Kalispell community and not just us as home builders. First, the update aligns our local code with the International Building and Fire Code and with the standards used by many of the surrounding communities. That consistency helps streamline the development process, making it more predictable for everyone involved. More importantly, the change supports better home design without having to increase the lot sizes. It allows for more architectural variety, reduces the visual impact of garages, and it contributes to more attractive and livable neighborhoods. Design flexibility also means homes can be more space efficient without being more expensive. For example, allowing eaves into the setbacks can create an additional eighty to one hundred and forty square feet of usable interior space, and that might be a home office, an extra bedroom, or just more space for a growing family within the same lot footprint. This small adjustment also supports affordability. When builders can design smarter within existing lots, those efficiencies often translate into savings that benefit homebuyers and ease pressure on the land supply. In short, it's not just a builder benefit, it's a thoughtful, low-impact change that promotes good design, housing affordability, and long-term community quality. I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
Hello. Hi, Commissioners. My name is Kisa Davison. I live at three twelve Sixth Avenue East in Kalispell. I'm also the owner of Iron Star Construction, building residential units in Kalispell. I have my own public comment, but I also have a letter written by our superintendent, the once, one of the building inspectors who used to work for the city. So would you like me to read his letter or submit it?
Yes, please read it and submit it.
I'll do my best Shane Cook impersonation. Let's see. Dear Members of the Planning Commission, I'm writing as a local builder to express my strong support for the proposed zoning text amendment that would allow required setbacks to be measured to the exterior wall of a structure rather than to the outermost projection such as the eaves or other architectural features. This change would apply beyond the allowances already permitted under IRC section R-three oh one point two one, which provides certain exceptions for residential structure but does not fully address or clarify the implications in zoning compliance or local building reviews. The background and purpose of this request. Currently, the setbacks are often interpreted or enforced as measured to the furthest projection of a structure, including eaves, overhangs, or architectural elements that do not add to the building's functional square footage or mass. This creates unintended consequences such as, one, it reduces the usable building area, so measuring to the eaves penalizes thoughtful architectural design and limits flexibility of lot usage, particularly on smaller or irregularly shaped parcels, resulting in smaller footprint homes and limiting design features that buyers would prefer to have in their homes, especially at the price point that new home construction is enduring in the market today. Two, the setback also discourages sustainable design. Eaves serve critical functions for shading, passive cooling, reliable roof venting, and protection from weather, features that are important for energy-efficient and harsh climate-resistant buildings, sorry, climate-resilient buildings, foundation health, et cetera. We have seen this in the growing popularity of no eve home designs in our city. And three, uneven enforcement and interpretation in the IRC and other codes that apply to this section or may be interpreted as applicable. So the proposed amendment, I respectfully request the city consider a zoning text change that would clearly establish that required setbacks are to be measured from the vertical exterior wall of the structure, not from architectural projections such as eaves, cornices, or bay windows, provided those projections do not violate fire separation or other safety standards. Such a change could include appropriate limits on the depth of projections allowed within setbacks, for example, no more than twenty-four or thirty inches beyond the wall, mirroring or improving upon IRC allowances while providing certainty in the zoning code. The benefits of this change is greater design flexibility for homeowners, architects, and builders, improved clarity for zoning reviewers and the public, increased consistency with the intent of setbacks, which is to maintain space between buildings, to ensure fire separation distance, and to protect a neighborhood character without being punitive for minor projections. And then finally, a support for sustainable design and good building practices. I believe this is a small but meaningful update that aligns with your sound planning principles and supports both property rights and neighborhood integrity. I hope the council will take this, this request, under consideration and initiate the appropriate process for zoning text amendment. Thank you for your time and your service to our community. Sincerely, Shane Cook.
Could you please submit that to the staff, too?
Yes. I have copies as well. So my own support for this proposed change to the setback. The problem with our current rule really is that, like Shane stated and also Peter stated, that that, and of course PJ outlined in the staff report, is that the setback rules measure to the furthest point of the house, like the eaves on the roof, and unfortunately, from neighborhood to neighborhood, those eve requirements actually change. And so if, as we see zoning changes require us to have higher-density neighborhoods, that can actually even be more punitive for not only builders but also for the homeowners, because if a neighborhood HOA comes through and decides that the eve requirement, whether it's for design or architecture or even sustainability, neighborhood character, that they want to have a larger eve, now we've got a shrinking, shrinking footprint in that home. So it shrinks that usable space. The other the other big impact of that rule that, that we don't like is that, is that inconsistency between neighborhoods. So now with this zoning change or the text change, it would be consistent across all the different neighborhoods that if it's a setback, it really is a wall-to-wall setback and not an eve or a projection setback. So really, it's simple. Let's simplify what the text says so that we can eliminate the confusion for builders, for new folks coming into the community, and also just to make the market a little bit more friendly for the residents. This is a really good opportunity to do just that, so I encourage you to adopt this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Do we have anyone online?
No comment.
No comment? Okay. Hearing done, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing phase. I don't know, entertain a motion.
Sorry, I'm getting there. I swear. I need my cheat sheet, though.
I've got one here.
I was gonna email you about that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation of Kalispell City Planning Commission for, where is that? Where are we at? Sorry. For KZTA dash twenty-five dash oh-one to rewrite the zoning regulations for setbacks to be defined as the horizontal distance required between any structure, with the exception of eaves.
Second. It's been moved and seconded for approval of the filed move forward. Board discussion.
Before we jump in that real quick, just for clarity, so your motion was at this text amendment as presented in the staff report, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Some questions. Have we ever had problems with builders coming to us with this hurdle? And has it limited them from doing architectural building in this way?
Typically not. I think one thing is is pretty consistent through our zones at five-foot side setbacks, and that's usually where it kicks in. It's usually not really an issue in the front or the rear or side corner setback. Although this would apply to, to all those setback areas and allow the two-foot encroachment into that. I said historically, what we've done is kind of had a bright line where nothing can project into it, and we set it at five feet, largely because that kind of mirrors a lot of stuff with building code. Because you can get closer than that with structure under building code, but things start kicking in as far as fire protection. That's why you can have, you know, a townhome where there's zero setback, and it's right up to each other. When you have that two-foot encroachment with the eaves closer than five feet, there's certain types of fire protection underneath or type of construction with eaves that come out with the trusses there that you would need to do. That's one thing I would have to start asking builders more for, so, you know, if this is adopted, we would probably be requiring additional details as part of a building permit in order to make that, that happen. I do think there has been some situations where, especially on tighter lots, where you see zero eaves or maybe a six-inch eve or something like that, because you're trying to fit that within there. I think that that's where it can kind of pop up most typically. You know, other communities that have done, that allow some of those encroachments, like Whitefish, for example, has got a ten-foot side setback, and then they allow a certain percentage of the building to encroach up to three feet. So effectively, they've got a seven-foot setback where we've got five, but they allow certain projections that go in, and that's where I kind of referenced that in the staff report, that there's certain advantages to having a nice bright line. It's just five feet, it's easier to administer, and it's like one line. I think it's two pages in the Whitefish one that you have to work through in terms of calculations on percentages and how you can do those encroachments. So we're still trying to like make that balance, and I think that was one of the nice things about how this was put together, is it's still pretty much a bright line. It's five feet to the building wall and allows up to a two-foot encroachment with just the eve, which I think was pointed out in some of the public testimony there, would allow a little bit more flexibility in terms of, because we want to encourage some of the eaves to come out there, because it does look better, and there's certain advantages in terms of the building, all the things that were outlined there. So this would allow, you know, some of those projections to happen. I think if you just said, oh, the side setback is three feet, then you'd probably have the same discussion at three feet, and people would want a one-foot encroachment to the three foot. So that's where this kind of strikes that balance there. I think as we're getting smaller lot sizes today than a lot of these rules were set, you know, twenty or thirty years ago in terms of the setbacks, you're working typically with some larger lots where space wasn't quite as valuable as you were coming in, so. So anyway, that's a long answer to your question, but, but yeah, it, I think it comes up in some situations, but it's not a real widespread issue, I would say.
So the, the follow-up question, I guess, is more about the fact that in my brain, the snowfall on a fence, right? You have an angled scenario where snowfall falls on a fence. Is that part of the ever, like, risk that a builder has or that we would have for setting that rule? Does that, do we need to worry about that?
The closer you get to a property line, it can be an issue, but in a lot of those situations, that's really a private issue with trespass. You can have the same thing with trees or something like that falling over. Different things like that would be, you know, private action, not necessarily governed by us. We don't really govern, you know, snowfall coming off, but that would be a reason why you wouldn't want to get too close in a situation like that.
So it doesn't put the city at risk for passing this and then retroactively getting a lawsuit because we changed it?
No, I, I wouldn't see it, because there's even today in the city, in a townhome situation, you'd have situations with zero setbacks. And so, yeah, yeah, I wouldn't see that as a huge risk.
Okay, it looked like this would apply to R-three, R-four, and R-five at the limited, or at the five-foot side setback requirement, where I would be most concerned about this. So what, some, and I think it was Kisa that mentioned that this would bring this up to the IRC regulations, or, I'm sorry, it could have been the other gentleman, but is that accurate? Like, are we?
Well, I mean, the IRC is separate from what the zoning is, because that would be the building code aspect to that. And a lot of things, building code is, you've got time and money, it basically lets you build almost anything, right? And so you can get closer to the property line, it just starts kicking in more and more fire protection typically is what you're looking at in that situation. You might have, you know, might have a situation where you can't have a window on that side if you're getting closer than five feet. And again, that's one reason why the five feet has always kind of been there, is because when your zoning setback is at five feet, then you're not necessarily fighting those issues with the building stuff. So did that answer your question with that, or?
Yeah, I think so.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Rory? Just for consideration by the commission, both the applicant and the proponents who have spoken this evening are developing properties in subdivisions that I am responsible for. Neither of them are currently clients of mine or of my employers, but I just wanted the commission to be aware of that, and if anyone has any concerns about that being a conflict of interest, I'm happy to step down from the discussion.
Board, anybody got a, worried about a conflict of interest?
No, given Rory's typical involvement with a project, that does not concern me at this point.
Yeah, it doesn't concern me either, so. Okay, we've got no more comments from the board, why, let's go ahead and take a vote.
Joshua Borgart?
Aye.
Doug Kaufman?
Yes.
Kate Walker?
Yes.
Rory Young?
Aye.
Pip Burke? Chad Graham?
The vote passes on four to, well, four zero. Oddly enough, took me a while, right? Anyway, what, what's the council date for this? Will it be the council date, PJ?
October sixth would be first reading on that.
Okay, October sixth. Everyone, come back and get your digs in at the council. Let's move along to old business, staff.
Okay, we had three projects that have been coming through the process. One was Stillwater Village, which was the mixed-use development up in Silverbrook. And, yeah, it went through first reading without any particular issue at the council level, so. Yeah, Silverbrook Village up there. Ashley Creek Park was the annexation, initial zoning, and then partial rezoning of the area over on the west side of town where Ashley Creek Park would be. That also was unanimously approved by council on pending second reading. North Meadows was the apartment project, and that was something that was actually at two different sessions with, with the Planning Commission. And city council annexed the property on first reading, was approving R-four as opposed to RA-one zoning. That would be pending, that was a six-to-one vote, I believe, at council for the R-four zone rather than the RA-one. RA-one would allow the apartments, and R-four would not. R-four is single-family and two-family housing, so. They denied this conditional use permit because it didn't mesh with the zoning that was allowed on there. So you may see a situation there where they'll come back with a preliminary plat that would be some form of single-family or townhome development in that area. That remains to be seen. That was the current status that came through there, again, pending second reading.
Thank you, PJ. Board, anybody got anything from old business? Okay, let's move along to new business now, staff.
Okay, so our next meeting would be October fourteenth. We've got one application in as an agenda item and public hearing, and that is the annexation of the property that would house the jail on the south end of town off of Snowline. So that would be the one item of business. We'd also be looking at doing a work session, going through a couple additional chapters in the proposed land use plan.
Board, any new business?
No.
Hearing none, I guess we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
And roll into a work session.
Yeah, roll into the work session right away. Most people want to take a break.
Okay, let me bring it up. Yes. Okay, so you guys ready to roll right into it?
Yep, I think so.
Okay, so what we're looking at doing tonight was kind of stepping through just kind of a reminder of the framework that we're working in right now, how we're outlining the land use plan, generally following the state statute and how it outlines. Again, an awful lot of what we're looking at having in the new land use plan is really out of the current growth policy that we have. That was just adopted back in two thousand and seventeen. A lot of it is still very relevant and would apply today, but, you know, going through and making sure that everything is updated, that that needs to be, and that we take a look at all the different aspects to make sure that it's current and applicable to what we do. So I was gonna step through this. We did a lot of work on some of the specific chapters. I'll put that up, and we can kind of go through what we have, you know, keeping in mind that what we're working on right now is just really, you know, draft preliminary chapters. We're not, you know, approving any version of this tonight. Still at some later point, you know, we would have a public hearing on these and bring public comment in on that, and then forward a recommendation to city council, which would be doing the same thing. But again, just kind of where we're at, you know, we look in an executive summary. We did have chapter one, which would be an introduction, general two, or chapter two would be general existing conditions and population projections, and chapter three would be housing. These are all the chapters that we've looked at in the past. Um, these are all the chapters that we've looked at in the past, and so we have some pretty good versions of that um moving forward there. Uh tonight, the focus was going to be on chapter four, which is local services and facilities. Um, you know, here we'd be looking at public safety, so police, fire, EMS, healthcare. Uh utility services, water sewer storm, solid waste, um transportation. Um, education would be in that chapter, um parks uh as well. Uh, chapter five would be economic development. Um. Chapter six would be natural resources. And chapter seven is our land use uh uh and map, uh which would be the map you would see up over on the wall over there, um which would establish the different. Use areas that we would project out in the planning jurisdiction. And then finally wrapping up with the implementation plan, um and then attaching neighborhood and area plans and so forth. Um. Jumping into chapter four, um you know, right now, a- and I I would apologize, we didn't have this version up for you guys to read through, uh but we've been working on this um and are continuing to work on it. Um but just kind of wanted to step through some of the language. Again, the vast majority of the language in here is what we've got existing. Um but just to kind of see, uh you know, if there's any major issues that you see on there or anything else that you think should be added or or taken out. Um so with that being said, we just kind of stepped through what we've got here. Uh how these are generally laid out is at the start of each chapter, we would have, you know, a brief description of um, you know, what's in them and kind of what we would see. Um with this one here, for example, uh at the start of this local services section, uh just kind of outline the different sort of services that we do provide to the community. Um, the next paragraph there is calling out some of the specific um. Facilities plans that we would have. Um, the water facility plan, which we adopted in twenty nineteen, sanitary sewer uh collection and wastewater treatment plant facility in twenty twenty. Uh transportation plan in twenty one. Um, it's important to know that we are working on updates, so we've actually put that out uh with RFPs, got um responses back. And have engineering firms working on uh updates to those facility plans. Uh they're also working on an update to the stormwater facility plan, uh which was adopted in two thousand eight. Um, some of the highlighted areas, I do have meetings pending with both police and fire departments to um make sure that we get everything in here accurately. Uh but there was a police operations report in twenty two and a fire EMS uh report in twenty three. Uh as well as a solid waste master plan in twenty four uh that were included in here. Uh the parks plan, there you may be aware they're doing a. Updated comprehensive master plan. The one that's currently on the books was from two thousand six. Uh also wanted to note that there was the public safety level levy that was approved by the voters in twenty twenty four. Um, so one of the key parts that we have here with this next section, next paragraph. Was highlighting that all those plans are being incorporated by reference into the land use plan. So each one of those might be a couple hundred pages or more uh with an awful lot of detail that we're not. Repeating as we're going through here, uh but they're incorporated into that. So when we do updates uh to one of those facility plans, we would take it through as a growth policy amendment as well. Uh to keep that document up to date. So are there any comments or questions about that intro paragraph?
No, but that's that's a brilliant way to take care of that all in one.
Okay.
You can't, I mean.
Yeah.
This thing would be like this many pages.
E- exactly, so. So it seems like that would be something you guys are on board with how that's incorporated in and, you know, any questions on that history or where we're at with those facilities plans?
Hey, PJ?
Yes?
Um, so the facility plan updates are kind of as a result of three eighty two, right? In terms of like the potential changes in densities and that kind of thing with ADUs, that that's one of the reasons why we're. Out of whatever, out of sequence, out of schedule for actually updating our facility plans.
Yeah, that was the real driving force and and like I said, three eighty two is it was a big reason for that, but you know, also taking into consideration ADUs, which is, you know, another change in state law. Um that would bring that in, so that was definitely bringing those um up to the forefront. Um. A good chunk, if not all of those updates, were actually getting covered through grant money through pro housing, uh grant money that came through, so. Any other questions on the intro? Okay, so again, you know, how we align this, um kind of stepping through chapter four point one, it was public safety and emergency services. Um and the way that we outline each one of these sections, um as we go through and have um. First, just kind of scroll through. We got issues, goals, policies and recommendations, and that's kind of the rhythm as we're going through each one of these subchapters on everything. Um but then just kind of stepping up here, you know, again, there's a little bit of an intro, uh again, pretty general. Um but then calling out certain issues that are out there, for example, with with the county jail and the amount of beds that uh are in there now compared to what um we would need to serve the population today. Um. We are noting in there that uh the new jail is being proposed on the south side. Um and some of these, when we get to adoption of this, we may have. You know, bond measure on this may be resolved as to whether or not we're doing that for sure or not. Uh we may have some of those facilities plan updates actually completed, and so we may tweak that language. So again, it's just a draft um that's, you know, spelling out where we're at. Um, you know, running through some of the issues that are there, uh illegal drugs in the community, limited space. Um then that steps down to a goals. Um and you can kind of see some of this is rather general again, ensuring safe and healthy neighborhoods. I don't think that's too controversial. Um, talking about the jail expansion, um where we would need to um, you know, combat illegal drugs in the community. Getting down to policies, then, you know, add it. We want to adequately staff law enforcement agencies. Um, you know, make sure that staff conduct themselves in an appropriate manner and have an unbiased enforcement of laws. Uh recommendations uh would be to coordinate between law enforcement uh agencies, uh pursue grants, provide funds for staffing and equipment. Um and then as the community grows, ensure that law enforcement agencies have adequate staffing. So are there any questions or comments on the police law enforcement aspect of that? Okay, um stepping down into a fire and ambulance services, um. You know, again, the intro paragraph that's coming through here, um no real changes uh as what we were doing with that. Um, some of the issues that you'd be looking at, um you know, fire protection by the fire departments uh limited to the area with the city limits of Kalispell. Um again, one of the things that we want to meet with the fire department on is making sure that we have um updated information here on automatic versus mutual aid agreements that are out there because. Um, that does come into play in the area that, you know, that both that we're able to serve with mutual aid coming in as well as the area that we are serving with mutual aid going out, so. Uh but we want to make sure that that is um. Accurate as we're coming through here. Um. One of the things that we also needed to meet with them about was where we're at specifically with the ISO rating. Uh and what sort of things might be necessary in order to maintain or approve our current rating on that. Uh, one thing that we did add in that wasn't in the prior growth policy is that one of the issues right now is only approximately one third of EMS bills are paid by customers when they utilize the service. And about two thirds of them go unpaid. Uh and so from a financial perspective, that's definitely an issue in terms of EMS service that we want to um try to address in in some manner or fashion. Um, running down through goals, um. You know, a lot of this goes into making sure that um there's adequate staff um and equipment in order to serve the existing area as well as any growth that happens. Uh again, needing to nail down the ISO rating. Um, stepping into policies, um. Looking at, you know, making sure that new construction or any remodeling uh is something that's done in compliance with the applicable uh fire electrical building codes. Um, make sure that um. You know, there's a safe working environment, protect our community with highest level of professionalism, uh and making sure there's adequate training and resources for fire department personnel. Again, another section in here that gets into some detail on ISO ratings, um that we'll need to um work through with the fire department. Um, continued appropriate training, um any necessary multi-company or multi-jurisdictional involvement and then make sure that we have the uh. Good and improving working relationships with any other responding agencies, so um any questions on fire EMS? Some, okay. Um. Healthcare is a section that we'd have in here, um and it's certainly an important part of um. Of the community and and what we need in order to have a functioning city. I think it's under some uh prior master plans, growth policy, it was looked at as more of an of the economy industrial type of component of this. We put this underneath the um local services and facilities because that's how it's it's outlined with the um state law with Malupa. Uh talks about this in conjunction with um city EMS and police fire services. Um, one important thing with this is um even though there's a relationship there because EMS would be taking people to the hospital, to the ER. Um, we don't, this isn't a plan for the hospital, so we're not establishing a plan for how they should grow or how they should provide services. But it's acknowledging that it's it's a component of the service to the community. Um it needs to be addressed in here and something that we want to keep in mind, but we're not establishing that plan on their behalf. Um, in similar ways in terms of the issues, you know, making sure that as as neighborhood continues and the city is is a whole continues to grow. Um, that the hospital keeps pace with that and healthcare in general keeps pace with that. Um, parking has always been an issue up there. Um I would note that's there was a number of changes in this uh draft that's different than what we've had in. Uh prior versions or our current one, um because they did do a planned unit development over there and came up with some ways of dealing with um campus wide parking. Uh campus wide signage. There was some language in here before about utilizing uh campus signage, get people around the the entire. Uh healthcare community up there. Um and some of that's been implemented, which is one reason, you know, we need to update things, but um. Uh even though that's addressed up in there, uh you know, I think the hospital understands is they continue to add services up there. Uh and even without that, the the parking is something that they need to take into account as they develop, so. Um. You know, pedestrian access being important up there. Um. We want to make sure we encourage the development growth of the community up there, uh you know, provide for satellite area or areas where healthcare related development can occur, you know. For instance, we've got lots of these B one zones, um especially when you're talking about those neighborhood buffer nodes that we've done in some of those outlying areas that really designed around having. Some small clinics or or doctors' offices that are available, so that's something that we do do today. Um. You know, we want to make sure that we provide adequate infrastructure and public services to support them. Uh we want to coordinate with the hospital to monitor and nec- if necessary, modify that existing PED that I talked about up there. Um. Housing is certainly something that's of paramount importance to them, uh as they're trying to bring in nurses and doctors and other staff up there. Um. So a- any questions, comments on the healthcare section? Okay, uh so the next major chapter then is utility services. Um as distinguished from, you know, the emergency services that are up there. Uh, water um would be the first one we'd be addressing and. That was the uh intro paragraph in terms of that subchapter. You know, as we're getting into and sewer, I think, has some of the same same issues too, is that, you know, as the city's getting to be over a hundred years old, well over a hundred years old. Um. Some of that long-term maintenance and making sure that things are in place, um that. We have good maintenance, that we can continue to provide a a good service is something that's important we need to keep in mind. Um, you know, making sure that we possess appropriate water rights, um, you know, dealing with bioterrorism type of issues, um. And making sure that any of those issues are mitigated. You know, a- again, some of this just really flows from tho- those facilities plans, but you know, the timing and need for water main extensions or expansions, wells, tanks. Um any of those sorts of things. Uh one thing that we've added from the last um growth policy that we did was we had. Two pressure zones. Now there's a third that's in development, um mainly geared around that um development happening down Foy's Lake Road. Um. Uh, fire flow capacity is an issue in some areas. Um, certain private systems that are adjacent to the the city of Kalispell. And this does kind of tie back to some fire, uh can kind of become an issue, so making sure that we try to upgrade those uh if and when we can. Um, making sure that areas are looped, uh which is again important for fire protection, but also water service redundancy and maintaining water pressure. Um. So in terms of goals, and this is something that we're showing in in really all of these areas, um water, sewer, storm and so forth, uh transportation. Is, you know, making sure that we complete, you know, any type of uh facilities, plans, update that we needed to do. Um, but uh also to make sure that we continually monitor those so that five years from now or six years from now or ten years from now. Uh we're doing updates when necessary, so we keep that current. You know, again, looking, making sure that we maintain and update water rights, um, you know, implement water conservation programs. Um. You know, working to incorporate all users of city water and this is probably true in sewer as well uh into the city. Uh there are areas out there where there's um. Users of city services that haven't annexed in. They might be in wholly surrounded areas or adjacent to the city. Um. Making sure we loop water lines and just continue to provide safe potable water to meet the needs of all users. Um and a lot of those then are reflected in policies um as we're going through here, avoiding dead end lines, looping um water sys- water mains when practicable. Um, requiring annexation when service is being provided. Um discouraging individual wells being within the city. And again, here monitoring and as necessary, updating any facilities or capital improvements plans tied to to city water. So any comments, questions on water?
Um, the PFAS monitoring, does that? Fall under this or is that more in like water treatment facilities or?
It would be more directly in some of the, you know, facility plan, for example, and other things that were out there. And and again, this is pretty general when we have it in here. Um but um, you know, we did talk about that at a staff level, um and let's see where was it at, um. You know, number seven here um was certainly something that we would say would fall within that and and whether it was PFAS today or some other issue that may come up yours from now. Um, I think that would, that goal and that policy would ring true in any of those situations, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So anything else with water? Okay, again, same rhythm with sewer. Um, got a hundred and fifty miles of sanitary sewer, uh forty three uh public lift stations. Uh and the treatment facility. And this is where you see some of the. Some ways that some of those different facilities are tied together and the impact of stormwater runoff into the wastewater treatment plan can negatively impact the wastewater treatment plan, so. And stormwater becomes an important aspect um indirectly of of sanitary sewer as well. Um, but y- you know, again, you know. Acknowledging that there's certain onsite sewage treatment, which isn't necessarily the best thing um as far as the city as a whole is concerned, um. But certainly with new development requiring uh any upgrades that are necessary to serve it, um and trying to do what we can to bring existing uh septics um onto sewer. Of course, with sewer, uh you know, Evergreen Sewer District is certainly um a factor that when you're looking at how you're operating the system, and so it's something to acknowledge that's that's in here. Um, as with water, and I mentioned, you know, the sanitary sewer wastewater treatment plant facility updates are um underway. Um, we want to connect um anybody within the city that's on septic to city sewer whenever that's possible. Um. Yeah, trying to eliminate infiltration of high groundwater into the collection system. Uh and ensuring that we've got adequate capacity is as the city grows, uh to make sure we accommodate future development. And then I think in terms of recommendations and so forth, those kind of follow through um kind of in the same rhythm what we talked about with goals and what you would see in 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 water, so a- any questions, comments on that? Uh so one thing I did kind of want to share here, so this is something that um, you know. So one thing I did kind of want to share here. So this is something that, you know, Public Works uses. It's continuously updated every day, but in terms of their their system and just kind of keeping tabs on everything. And this is where some of those numbers came from when we kind of talked about the number of public lift stations that are out there and how many miles of sewer mains. But they're just giving you, you know, an idea of our water system statistics. So anything else at all on sewer? Stormwater management was the next one. You know, again, the intro paragraph as we're coming through here. As it notes in there, certainly, you know, impervious surfaces are are certainly something that comes in to play on that, both in terms of how you're directing stormwater. And then, you know, what your water quality is coming off of that, especially if it's a parking lot and you've got fluids dripping down into that and getting into into systems and eventually getting into the rivers and streams. You know, in terms of issues, there's, you know, through most of the planning jurisdiction. Which I think was an important distinction too, because within the city, there's quite a bit larger percentage of area that does have public storm drainage systems. And and then noting when there isn't that public service that's out there. It can be difficult to, for new development sometimes to make that happen when they have to deal with those issues onsite without being able to discharge into a public system. Does note that, you know, we've got the MS four permit that we need to do and a lot of our regulations in the city aren't necessarily things that are just city only, they're flowing from that, from that MS four permit and requirements that we have to do under state laws. So in order to implement those, a lot of our stormwater regulations and development standards flow from that. And again, as everything else, you know, making sure that we keep those facilities plans up to date, which is why we're doing that that current update as we speak. Try to improve drainage stormwater infrastructure, especially in problem areas, the community, but then also making sure new development and redevelopment have adequate storm drainage. And then continuing to work with the MS four permit. And I think we'd see like with the policies and recommendations flowing from those issues. And again, very similar to what the other other facilities would be. So comments, questions on stormwater? Solid waste. We do also have a solid waste plan that's out there. Does all of our solid waste view to the collection and goes to the Flathead County landfill with our recycling done through the private sector. So we do have a tie-in with the the county landfill and and their plans up there. And we did meet with them on that, by the way, too, as part of our public outreach for this. You know, issues, you know, the limited opportunities for recycling in the area is one issue with solid waste because certainly the more recycling that we can do. The better able that we are to manage solid waste at the landfill. You know, goal is expanding recycling efforts, trying to keep streets and alleys clean and free debris, high level of service. Maintaining competitive rates as part of that. Again, policies encouraging that recycling, removing large objects, furniture and construction material from the alleys. Which makes it difficult for the guys that are doing pickup on that. So any questions on the solid waste collection? Jumping down into transportation. And this is one where we do have the transportation plan that was adopted in twenty-one. This is one that we're not doing an update on right now. Because the increased densities that we were looking at didn't really have a direct impact on that relatively new transportation plan. But it does address, you know, the full area, the planning area of the city. Looks at, you know, the type of roads that we should be anticipating and approximately where they should be has different categories of what those those should be. And like the other facilities plans be incorporated in by reference on this. You know, in terms of issues, overall traffic volumes have certainly grown considerably in the last ten years and they're forecasted to continue, continue to continue. You know, in some areas at least lacking pedestrian facility and bicycle facilities. And when that occurs can create safety problems. You know, a lack of a gridded interconnected street system in some areas of the city and outside of the city as well. Truck traffic, particularly coming through ninety-three. Can be an issue. Winter operations and again, running through some of the different things with, you know. While we do have a comprehensive pedestrian and bicycle travel plan, there's also a lack of revenue source to implement some of those improvements. I think that ties in and we'll get into this at a later date in terms of our implementation section. Because we do have to look at capital improvement plans as part of that. You know, there's a few areas that kind of got called out here in terms of Whitefish Stage. Area between Oregon Street and West Reserve and needing to try to work with the existing projected traffic that would be on that that area. Seeing that there isn't an east-west connection between ninety-three and Whitefish Stage, north of Oregon Street and south of West Reserve Drive is certainly a major issue. And trying to get a connection across Stillwater should be something that we should be really focused on. Limitations in public transportation is certainly an issue here. Kind of run through here. And again, in terms of getting some of these statistics amount the miles of roadway. Hundred and forty-five miles of roadway within the city, thirty-six point eight is rated as poor, very poor on the pavement condition index system. And just kind of sharing what that looks like on here. Again, something that's updated nightly. Most of what we have is good or very good, but there's certainly some stuff down in the very poor category. And trying to get, you know, a funding program and a maintenance program to try to minimize that to the extent that we can would be an important step. As you're getting into goals, you know, a safe, efficient, accessible, cost-effective transportation system. And I think that that applies both in terms of cars and bikes and pedestrians is a theme that you would see through this whole thing. We do have a complete streets approach that we have had and we continue to have in the growth policy and land use plan. You know, the financially sustainable transportation plan, I think is an important thing and identifying and protecting future road corridors. Is a big part of what that transportation plan offers. So in terms of policies, complete streets approach. Trying to coordinate land use and transportation as best we can. Would want to support the expansion of public transit. Especially as you're looking at needs of seniors, disabled people, but the general public as a whole. Continue to develop pedestrian bicycle system. That bike pedestrian connection between woodland and Seventh Avenue East North is important. And again, here you would see that roadway connection between Stillwater, Stillwater, over the Stillwater River to link FECC area to the area around Edgerton School. I would note that that's something that's been in various plans since the seventies locally here. It's always been an expensive thing to do. But it is a really important component when you look that we don't have any connection from Oregon all the way up to Reserve. And that is something that creates a lot of the congestion that people complain about on Oregon Street. Because people have to come down there and up if they're going to say the summit or to the middle school or to the hospital. Or they go up to Reserve, which again creates the congestion up there where we need to do those expansions. But it also creates congestion on Highway ninety-three and Whitefish Stage because instead of coming to that midpoint and crossing. They're driving up and down those two roads to get to those two other connections. So. Again, that's been something that's been in plans at least since the seventies from what we can find has is in our current growth policy, it's in our current transportation plan and we would certainly want to highlight that in the new land use plan. Coming through here, this is one area that we needed to just make sure it was consistent with the the new transportation plan, but really kind of nailing down the principal arterials. Some of the specific details on that, minor arterials, collector streets and local. And as you can see there and you're probably familiar, there's a hierarchy of different streets that are out there. Generally, when you're looking at arterials, your major arterials are basically Highway two and and Highway ninety-three. But stepping down to minor arterials. Collector streets and local ones. And in terms of recommendations, you know, reviewing and updating the transportation plan is necessary. Again, that's something that we don't really need need to do at the moment and isn't something that we're working on at the moment, but continuing to monitor that is important. Certainly want to look at any type of alternative funding sources that are available. So for example, you know, the the work that's being done on Reserve right now to, you know, improve that section of road was something that the city worked with MDT on in order to acquire grant money in order to do that. So we'd want to see any type of funding sources or availability of funding sources to try to implement some of the plans and the needs that are in here. So anything in terms of comments, questions on the transportation section? If not, then stepping down to Haven't done the section on education. We can look at that to the future meeting date. Similar to the healthcare, this is something that's called out in the land use plan. State statute and we need to make sure we address it in here, but it's not a plan that we're implementing for them. It's more of trying to recognize how their services work in conjunction with the city. They still have their own expansion plans. They still have their own funding. That's still their function. We're not regulating that or planning that out for them. But it is something that we will put in here as part of what we're doing. And we've met with with all the surrounding districts and have had discussions with them about where they're at in terms of their needs and their projections as well. So so we'll work that in as a chapter. And then the last section is parks and recreation. And you can kind of see how this is laid out here again with the, you know, an intro paragraph. You know, acknowledges a couple newer things since the growth policy went through last time, which would include the stormwater detention facility that has the multipurpose fields. Up near the Starling Development in the north end of town. Also recognized Ashley Creek Park is starting development and at this point isn't, you know, owned by the city completely. But it's certainly something that we would be acknowledging as part of our land use plan moving forward. Again, they're working on an update to their master plan, which hadn't been done since two thousand and six. And that would be incorporated into here. I'm not sure if they'll be done with it in time to incorporate it, but that would be the example of where we would come back and do a growth policy amendment to incorporate it into the the land use plan. In terms of their issues, you know, renovations and and maintenance have historically been underfunded. We want to try to avoid deferred maintenance as best as we can so that we don't have that overall decline in what the recreation assets are. Trails consistently rank high on community surveys. We saw that through our public outreach with the current land use plan. It's something that the community values rather highly. And while we address that in the transportation plan. We still need a truly comprehensive network of trails, sidewalks and bike lanes. I think there's a very good start out there. And certainly a lot of things that are in place today that weren't ten or twenty years ago. So we're moving in the right direction there. But we want to continue that momentum and, you know, both in developed areas and as developed areas continue to develop and to make sure that we get that component addressed. You know, there's a lack of public indoor recreation space. We don't really have a performing arts center or public meeting spaces. Those are all things that are important because our park and recs department isn't just about maintaining open space in parks. You know, there's recreation opportunities, whether it's for young kids with the little dribblers or with the agents, with the aging community and what they might need and everything in between. So making sure all those needs are net are met is an important thing. You know, goals completing park renovations in a timely manner. Making sure park system is safe and usable. Working with volunteers kind of leverages that resource. The more volunteers you get in, the further the money goes in terms of providing services to the community. You know, investing in pedestrian bicycle routes. And certainly, you know, improving and maintaining ADA access at at park sites. And and again, you know, policies and recommendations would kind of fall in place with with all of those. And that gets us to the end of that chapter. Is there any questions or comments on the parks component to that? So I I guess just to summarize that, I mean, A, you know, I think we've kind of talked about this before, but that's how we've laid out growth policies and the land use plan here. And in terms of that rhythm with the identifying the issues and goals and recommendations and policies that we'd be using. Seems like everybody's okay with that basic format and that we were going to continue to use that as we're working through the other chapters. And then I guess just in general, that's, were there any comments that came up or or questions in terms of this chapter? That you can think of?
I didn't have anything that I really stood out to me.
So as I stated before, you know, it's it's still a working document. You know, it's it's not the final version of that. You know, I'll be following up with the police and fire department on on some of theirs. We're working on that education section. And as with the other chapters, you know, we'll be bringing this back to you later before we get to a final adoption. But we would be looking at stepping through some of the additional chapters. You know, we'd be looking at economic development, natural resources and the land use map and implementation in the coming meetings. Just kind of see where we're at as we're coming through. But I would anticipate stepping through at the next meeting, as I mentioned, in October. And doing a similar type of a work session and some way starting to get close. So. Any comments or or questions on the general process or where we're at or concerns over anything or you think we're moving in the right direction?
Seems like you're moving in the right direction to me.
Okay. Well, unless you guys have anything else, that's all we had. So.
Anything else? Let's call it.